Make the request. Good evening. Like to call the Maryville Town Council meeting for Tuesday, September 27th. To order it is 6:30. At this time I'd ask that you stand for the invocation by Pastor Rick Beauchauvin, Trinity Memorial Lutheran Church. And please remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
My thank you. Hello, Godfather. Pray for the wisdom and strength for this council. Thank you. Bless those who serve in public office and the duties and the burdens that they carry. Pray for the town of Maryville and the work that will come before this board today. Your blessings that it may be handled with grace and wisdom. In the name of my Lord and Savior, Jesus, I pray. Amen.
Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. Roll call, Mr. Gert.
Span.
President.
Minchek.
Here.
Uzalak.
Here.
Baron.
Here.
Pettit.
Here.
Lamarcus.
Here.
Hardaway.
Here.
Seven, President, we have a form. Petitions, communications, remonstrations. We'd like to remind everyone that October is National Breast Cancer Awareness Month. And so, he's seeing me in the pink. Anything else, Mr. Spires?
Not this evening.
Okay. Consent agenda, accounts payable, registered voucher approval for September 27th, 2016, and approval of town council minutes, meeting minutes from September 13th, 2016. Motion by Councilwoman Uzalak, second by Councilwoman Span, that we approve the accounts registered vouchers for September 27th, along with the town council meeting minutes from September 13th. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Standing committee, budget finance, Councilman Pettit.
No report.
Public Works, Councilwoman Span. Bruce, we were talking about that. Can you expound on that a little bit?
Sure. Tonight, I need approval for the LPA consulting contract for our federal aid project that's going to consist of replacing all the warning and regulatory signs within the town of Maryville and the posts that they're on. Part of the project was also to do a complete inventory of all the signs within the town of Maryville. The construction inspection will be done by Butler, Fairman, and Seifert. The amount of the contract is for $76,150. This contract's already been pre-approved by Endot for the amount. This is a 90-10 project, so we're responsible for 10%. So, our 10% amount would then be just $7,615. So, if someone would please make a motion to approve.
Motion approved.
Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Span, second by Councilwoman Uzalak, that we approve the contract for the townwide sign replacement project. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Seven, zero. Anything else on the Public Works? When is the leaf pickup goes to?
Starts. We usually start the third week of October. It's always the last two weeks of October and then the month of November. And then, of course, it always carries on to the first week of December.
We're waiting on the newsletter to come out.
It'll be out next week.
Thank you. Council affairs, Councilwoman Uzalak.
No report.
Personnel policy, employee benefits, Councilwoman Baron.
I have no report.
Public safety, Councilwoman Uzalak.
No, I have a question concerning, regarding the signs we had talked about through the park department by the Kaiser Beach. I think, Richard, you said that we could put up some type of a no dumping sign?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. I just wondered, would that take place or what?
I actually gave Jan about five or so no dumping signs that they could put up along that conveyance to deter illegal dumping.
Okay, but we didn't get them up yet.
I gave them to Kevin and Public Works will be installing them. We just had a meeting at the beginning of the week as to the locations where the signs should go that would be most effective. So, they should be up within a week or so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
I have one thing on the public safety. Do we want to set the trick or treat hours tonight?
Yeah.
I think it's already been set.
We've already set them. Yeah. We had to get them as a newsletter, five to seven.
I was looking for five to 5:15. That was just me.
Is each councilman going to ride around in his ward with policemen like they did before or do they still do that?
Why, I get over 200 kids at my door. I can't beat my daughter.
Well, okay. All right.
I get them quite a bit, too. Yeah, no, I get, you know, my wife would have a house.
So, did you get the email I sent you?
Yeah.
Okay. Did you set any patrols down that street?
Uh, yeah, I just talked to a gentleman who's here in the audience and, uh, he needs it working out with you. He says it's not a two-way system.
Oh, okay. I'll talk to you after the meeting then.
What's that?
I'll talk to you after the meeting then.
All right, so everybody's good, five to seven?
Yep.
Mr. Pettit?
I'll be out trick or treating.
Oh, well, yeah, so you're good with it.
I'm good with it.
Thank you. Parks and Rec. Thank you, Joe. Is that what you wanted me to do?
I just want to make sure that you got enough candy up there.
There's never enough, Joe. Parks and Recreation, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
I'll give it to Jan.
The only thing I have on the agenda tonight is, Mr. Hardaway, you'll see that you have a participant counterpart. You got, uh, the council had originally signed that. That's for the signs for the trails. Well, they need two copies of signatures. It can't be faxed or anything else. So, I'm before you tonight to ask you to.
Only got one.
Copy. You already signed the first one, but they needed additional one.
Right. And then, I saw your sign with the rules on it and if I'm driving down the street, I can't see that sign. They're just regular, like, little sign signs. I thought, I was looking for something where when people walk to the park, they could say, oh, you got.
You want a digital billboard out there, Rich, or what? We got some 10 by 10s in the yard.
Everybody wants to be difficult. Uh, but I saw them and they're good. They got the right verbiage on them, but I was, I was looking for something else, but I'm okay with it, that that's what we got. Because it's, it comes, it gets into the entrance, I guess, so.
Well, I guess it would help us in any type of vandalism. However, I just, just my personal opinion, I just hate putting negative things on a park because everything's no, 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 no. The sign is there to be enforced. I just don't want the park to be looked at as a negative thing, well, I can't do this, I can't do that.
If we know the rules, we can play the game. If we don't know the rules, then it's like alleyball. We have to make them up as we go along. Our mentality. So, but don't change the signs. Let's just go with what we got. We've already invested money. Let's just leave them like we are.
How about once they're vandalized, then I'll make them bigger?
Kind of like closing the barn door after the horses. Thank you. No, that's okay. You did, you did good.
I also ordered the ADA swings.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
I'm hoping that those will be in in the next couple of weeks. It's, uh, usually those take a little bit longer than any other regular swing to take. Sometimes they have to mold those per order. So, I'm waiting for those and one will go up in Meadowland and the other one will go up in Curtis Park.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, environmental affairs, Councilwoman Baron.
I will refer to Matt Lake.
Yeah, we're 90% done with projects in Old Mill Manor. I was there with Robinson Engineering today. We got one little area to address and that's by Mr. Gorski's house. So, they're going to come up with a recommendation on that and we'll move forward on that as soon as we can.
Thank you, Matt. You get hazard pay.
We also started work on Chapel Ditch. We're starting with the park area and working way through. We still got to figure out easements within that conveyance because we can't just trespass with their, so I could get with John with you on that.
Aye, aye.
We're looking at plaits there. I think there may be an easement through there. We just got to look at the language and make sure that we're permitted to go in there and do the work we need to do and, uh, and do the proper permitting associated with that as well. I also, we completed an audit with IDM with Doug Wolf. Very challenging audit, but we did well as an entity to comply with Rule 13 under MCM 4, which is primarily runoff from construction sites as well as post-construction, which is, um, BMPs that are there for the duration, like detention ponds and things like that, to treat water quality, to meet the requirements. And we finalized engineering through Robinson Engineering on Southmark Park, on a redesign on a portion of that. We'll probably put that out for bid this fall and we'll see what the price is coming at and we'll probably start that next spring. So, and that's all I have.
Anything else on their environmental affairs? Election Public Relations, Councilwoman Lamarcus.
No report.
Economic Development, Councilman Pettit.
Uh, yes, Mr. President. One of the things John and I have been working on is a retention pond, Matt, out in the, in my neighborhood in the preserve. The homeowners association has gone to funk. The tax bills keep piling up. John and, um, I guess what I turned over to John is see how we can take over the rest of that retention pond. Matt, um, so, John, what do we need to do with that?
It's my recommendation to the council. This parcel has been coming up repeatedly on tax sale. We don't want it to fall into adverse hands, as occurred with the other drainage parcel. My recommendation, and the council members have a copy of the proposed deed in their packet, recommendation is that the town approve a motion tonight to accept the conveyance of the preserve's drainage and detention lot to the town of Maryville. It's a conveyance at no cost to the town, but that will create an exempt parcel of real estate and there'll be no risk in the future that it'll be bought by a unfavorable purchaser. So, if the council agrees, the matter would simply be a motion to accept the conveyance of the preserve subdivision drainage lot to the town of Maryville.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Uzalak, that we accept the lot in the preserves, the drainage lot in the preserves. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Utility liaison, Councilwoman Baron.
Yes, I do have something for, for, uh, with the Lake County Solid Waste Meeting and they are looking for a new compost site for their leaves. They are also looking into getting a new tire program going on to where they could get the semi trucks that the tires go into at a cheaper rate, use a work release to unload the semi trucks into a bin for the trucks to pick up. It will be $1.67 a tire versus $10.62 a tire.
Somebody would have to pay that?
Well, they're paying it right now. So, what it, it'd be reduced from 10 to $1.67. And it looks like that will happen with the company that they're going with. And they're, I heard that they're moving out of the town of Maryville.
They're moving out?
Uh, from the office.
Okay, I just had a moment of silence for that.
Okay.
Okay, anything else?
No.
Uh, abandoned properties. Mr. Breschemi, one quick question about that lot that we purchased for a dollar. Is, have we cleared all title with that?
That's, uh, that's which lot, council?
That's the one that's, uh, right next door to, to the school where the guy, we, we bought it for a dollar.
53rd Avenue?
Nope, 56th. It's 56th and Broadway. That was the one where you said that when you did some research that there was two names on the, on the deed as opposed to the guy that signed it.
I have a call into the husband who did sign the deed.
Right.
To have him make arrangements for the wife to come in and execute. We don't have her signature yet, but it'll be taken care of in due course.
All right, because I think that's going to be one of the easier ones that we can get. I think we've got a buyer for that one, so I'd like to go ahead and get that done as quick as possible.
That's a simple transaction. It's a matter of just getting a correct deed signed. The original deed, you'll recall, was signed only by husband, but when we checked the title, both husband and wife own title, so we need to do the corrected deed. And I'm waiting to hear back from him to arrange for his wife to come into the office.
All right, any, then, is there any update on the other six lots that we got from the tax sale?
Uh, we are in the process of submitting the notices required by law under the tax certificate purchase program to the interested parties. And then, as soon as the time period runs with the notices, we'll then be in a position to have the auditor issue a clear title deed to the town. We're moving through the legal steps for them.
Okay. And then, one more thing, we talked about this at the meeting the other day, is that we, we're thinking that we would like to go out for RFP to, uh, to get our own board up company as opposed to Public Works doing their boardups. And one of the advantages of that is to be able to say that when they boarded up, that they would have to use the secure view material and not just put plywood up, because our ordinance says that you can't use plywood. And one of the problems that we're having is down on 73rd Avenue, just probably in your ward, Vicki went down a couple of weeks ago and during school time, there was some little kid hiding in there, you know, and they kicked in the back door and, uh...
Carriage house?
No, not the carriage house. This was a house down, uh...
Resident, resident right across from, uh, right across from Aquinas on the corner.
Really? Oh, yeah, yeah.
They want to call the remodeling, they're doing some work on here now.
Okay.
So, we would like to get a boardup company. We'd like to have Bruce send out a request for proposal so that we can do our own, have a company that when we need to get something boarded up, they would be the people that we called and then they would be able to use the prescribed material. You know, in, uh, other than in case of emergency, like a fire, but anything else, that's how we would like to do it, because we are, what we're finding is too many of these homes that are vacant and abandoned now. People are going into them and, you know, if there's burglaries in the neighborhood, then they, they go to these empty homes and that's where they hide their stash. So, um, the second part of that is that we would also, I'd also ask the council and everybody else to, that if you see something, a house that's unsecure, you gotta let us know as soon as you see it. As you ride through your neighborhoods and you see something that the door may, even if the screen's open, gotta let us know so that we can get Vicki or somebody to hold it for us to go out there and check it and make sure that the house is secure, because they are just, you know, this is a haven for kids to go in rather than go to school. It's going to get cold here a little bit, so they're going to have to go to school. Till then, this is, they're hanging out in these buildings and it's committing, it's creating a problem for the residents in the, in the neighborhoods. So, I just encourage you to do that and also, um, I'd like to just ask the council if it's okay if we can get the RFP for boardup, uh, boardup company.
I make a motion that we have the town manager issue an RFP for boardup company?
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Uzalak, that we ask the town manager to send out RFP for a boardup company. Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Hardaway, I've got two items under your committee, if you don't mind. Number one, a question to John on the tax sale. Any idea, John, where the Old Mill falls in that tax sale? Is that tax sale taking place? Do we know what the status of Old Mill is? Gentlemen, the dentist across the street called me about the condition.
I don't, do not know, because I haven't checked the status of any of the Old Mill parcels. We have, we have all of them inventoried and it's easy to check them.
Okay, would you mind doing that and shoot me an email on that? Secondly, um, I'm going to get on my soapbox, Rich, because October's coming and I am, I'm going to make a motion and see if it pulls through. If that house at 7200 Block of Broadway is not down by November 1st, I make a motion that we take it down ourselves. I'm going to give the guy the month of October, John, like you said, per the hearing officer. If that thing ain't down come Halloween, we're going in there. That's my motion.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Uzalak, that in the event that the Marion Deli is not down by...
October 31st.
Over the 31st, that the town take it over and knock it down, starting November 1st. Is there any discussion?
I would like some discussion, Mr. President, if you don't mind. John, is there any ability, based on the hearing decision that Mr. Geek has made? Roxanne and Jeff and I met a while back about the possibility of doing something with a park there. And that's one, that along with that little triangle where the used car, if we got rid of those two buildings and secured those two properties, I'm guessing that Jan could put together a fantastic central park on Broadway for us that could be a centerpiece.
Sure, those would, those parcels would add to, uh...
That, it makes it a big, Jeff, we looked at the tax maps, it goes in back, it goes in back of the fire department there where the one house is off of 73rd Chief. I think long-term, we, we probably need to look into that. It's right there in the, in the heart of Maryville at 73rd and Broadway. So, if you can look into the possibilities of doing that, and then I think I gave you the phone number of that little triangle parcel, too, what they want for that, because they dropped that, uh, that used car building.
One, one option would be voluntary conveyance to the town at no cost. Another option, if...
Eminent domain.
If the property owners refuse, is eminent domain.
All right, just if you could research it for us and then Jeff and Roxanne and I can kind of get back together. I've got one side of the Pike Trail, Jeff's got the other, the east side of Broadway. The businesses are still watching it, believe. I got one business in particular that watches his window.
I ride by there numerous times a day.
Yep. Thank you, Mr. President.
Not a problem. Thank you, Mr. Pettit. Okay, that's all we have under abandoned properties. Let's go to general orders.
You had a motion and a second key.
Oh, sorry about that. Thank you, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries. Thank you, Joe.
Got your back.
All right, appreciate it. First reading ordinances, general orders and ordinance, town of Maryville, of the town council of town of Maryville, to amend the text of the zoning ordinance to establish exceptions to promote the development of affordable rental housing for lower income households.
Council members, you have in your packet a favorable recommendation after a public hearing conducted by the Plan Commission with respect to this zoning ordinance. The petitioners, representatives, attorney Oaks, and Mr. Donahoe are here. If council members have any questions, if there are no questions, when the council takes action, I ask that the council consider a suspension of the rules and adoption of the ordinance on second reading if there's no objection to that.
Motion to approve, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Uzalak, that we approve Order 16 dash 27 on first reading. Is there any more discussion?
Mr. Breschemi, we've always had this discussion on, this is a text change, not a zone change. On zone changes, that only requires one reading by state statute, correct?
Even a zone, even a zone change ordinance requires two readings.
Two readings, it does.
By the council.
Okay.
But you're correct. This is a change in the text or wording of the zoning ordinance. It's not a change of zoning of any particular parcel of property.
Right, okay.
And the council members know that this zoning ordinance text change has very limited application.
Yes.
Span.
Yes.
Minchek.
Yes.
Uzalak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
Hardaway.
Yes.
Motion carries, seven.
Motion to suspend, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilwoman Baron, that we suspend the rules on Order 16 dash 27, uh, to permit it to go to second reading. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Order 16, that's 28, in ordinance, town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies. We will get to it in second.
Second reading.
Uh, additional monies within the motor vehicle highway fund of town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, for the year 2016, not included in current budget.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second by Councilman Pettit, first, motion by Councilman Pettit, second by Councilman Span, that we approve Order 16, that's 28. Any discussion? Roll call, Mr. Gert.
Span.
Yes.
Minchek.
Yes.
Uzalak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes.
Motion carries. Order 16, that's 29. Here with me, the ordained resolve by the town of Maryville, that for expenses of Maryville Civil Town for the year ending December 31st, 2017, the sums herein specified are hereby appropriated and ordered, set apart out of several funds herein named for the purposes herein specified, subject to the laws governing the same. Such sums herein appropriated shall be held to include all expenditures authorized to be made during the year unless otherwise expressly stipulated and provided for by law. In addition, for the purpose of raising revenue to meet the necessary expenses of Maryville Civil Town, the property tax levies and property tax rates are, as herein specified, are included herein. Budget Form B4 for all funds must be completed and submitted in the manner prescribed by the Department of Local Government Finance. This ordinance resolution shall be in full force and effect from and after its passage for and approval by the town of Mary, by the town of Maryville.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span, that we approve Order 16 dash 29 on this first reading. Is there any discussion? Roll call, please.
Span.
Yes.
Minchek.
Yes.
Uzalak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes.
That concludes first reading ordinances. Now, second reading ordinance is, um, ordinance 16 dash 26, in ordinance in town of Maryville, Lake County, Indiana, appropriating additional monies within the unsafe blighted property fund from year 2016, not included in the current budget.
So moved.
Motion by Councilwoman Uzalak, seconded by Councilman Span, that we approve Order 16 dash 26 on second reading and because, is there any discussion? And because it is a second reading ordinance, at this time, we'd like to open it up for public comment. Is there any public comment on Order 16 dash 26? Any public comment? Any public comment? Roll call.
Span.
Yes.
Minchek.
Yes.
Uzalak.
Yes.
Baron.
Yes.
Pettit.
Yes.
Lamarcus.
Yes.
And Hardaway.
Yes.
Ordinance, that's 16 dash 28, and ordinance, no, 16 dash 27, sorry. sorry, uh, ordinance of the town, of the town council of town of Maryville, Indiana, to amend text of the zoning ordinance to establish exceptions to promote the development of affordable rental housing for lower income households.
So moved, Mr. President.
Second.
Motion by Councilman Pettit, seconded by Councilman Span, that we approve ordinance that's sixteen dash twenty-seven on second reading, is there any discussion? Because this is a second reading ordinance, I'd like to open it up for public comment. Any public comment on ordinance sixteen dash twenty-seven? Any public comment on ordinance sixteen dash twenty-seven? Any public comment? Roll call. Okay. Span.
Yes.
Mincheck.
Yes.
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 Yeah. Edit.
Tough night.
Tough night. I know, I call when I come home.
Wow.
Yeah.
Aye.
Yes.
Yes. Motion carries seven, zero. That concludes second reading ordinance says resolutions, resolution sixteen dash twenty-nine, a resolution of the town council of the town of Maryville, Indiana, approving real property tax abatement on property located within an economic revitalization area.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Councilwoman Yuzelak, seconded by Councilman Pettit, that we approve resolution sixteen dash twenty-nine, is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. That concludes resolutions, any BCA actions? Any BCA actions?
No.
Old business, any old business? Any new business? This time, we'd like to open it up for public comment, we ask that if you have public comments, you come up state your name, your address, and please limit your comments to three minutes. Any public comment? Any public comment?
I think we ought to just say thank you to Kevin, Mr. President, uh, for what you're doing, uh, when, in granting the text amendment with the three apartment complexes, he's making an investment in town of eleven million dollars?
It's one total of seventeen.
Seventeen million dollar investment, so that's, that's a pretty substantial investment on three developments, so...
Especially in they, they definitely, uh, impact Roxanne and my ward, definitely. I appreciate them, and I really look forward to when you guys get the fences up around the backside by Andrea.
Yeah.
Because I, I saw, every day I see somebody jumping the fence.
No more apartments.
We're not building apartments.
I know, I know, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, no more, we're done with them.
No, we're not.
We'll take care of the ones that we got, but we want no more.
There you go.
No more.